Okay, we're live now. Now, call order, this meeting, the Honeyberg Comic Act. Start with pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Good Father God, thank you for these board members that are here and for the employees of the city of Honeyberg and for the work that they put in trying to make Honeyberg a better place, but also considering all and the decisions they make. Please be with us this evening, guide and direct our thoughts for these things that we ask of your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
First order, approval of the motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Got a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of claims?
Make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. First thing is up, and I'll ask Phil to maybe go to a little bit, maybe history of this, is a proposed resolution authorizing interlocal cooperation agreement for the study of relinquishment of US 231. By approving the interlocal agreement, you're not making any decisions as to whether we're accepting relinquishment, whether we're even going to consider relinquishment, and what that amount is, but more or less working together with other, excuse me, other local units of government in negotiating and the terms of relinquishment. And, you know, some of that could be up to not accepting relinquishment. Just understand that. And if so, relinquish, when it's going to be relinquished, what that amount of relinquishment is worth to us to be able to do so. But it's just an opportunity that we can work with other local governments, have one voice, but also, at the same time, anything that we ask for financially, we have to be able to approve or come up with an amount. And right now, everybody, there is a study in there. We don't have, don't think we have to approve Avenue 231 tonight. I'd like to review that a little more, the agreement, to do the study for the group. That's, I think, we got that pretty late, but...
Yeah, we did.
And I haven't had a chance to look at that, so I'm not even comfortable suggesting we do that.
Thank you.
But what we're looking for tonight is to be able to bring this interlocal agreement. Our attorneys, the attorneys in DuBois County worked together to come up with this, and I think Phil gave a little history there.
Yeah, so, of course, as you're probably aware, Endot is proceeding on the path of developing and studying, developing and constructing, potentially funding is there, the Midstates Corridor as a north-south connector to I-69. In order to do that, they will relinquish 231, those portions in DuBois County. Those portions that are in the county would be relinquished to the county. Those portions that are in the city of Honeyberg would be relinquished to the city. And those portions that are in the city of Jasper would be relinquished to the city of Jasper. Relinquishment means those units of local government would take over that portion of the highway that is within their jurisdiction. They'd be responsible for all aspects of the highway, including maintenance, safety, not only maintenance of the surface, but of all structures, storm soars, culverts, stoplights, all accouterments in any way associated with that portion of US 231 that's located within their jurisdiction. The state of Indiana, Endot, will enter into negotiations with the units of local government to fund that obligation to maintain those structures for a period of up to 10 years. The funding would be from the state of Indiana, from Endot. I believe the legislature has already approved about a year or two years ago, $75 million for US 231 improvements through DuBois County. And I think it may also include part of Martin County. And that is the fund that would be available to fund the unit's contributions or the unit's responsibility to maintain and relinquish portions. It'd be divided somehow based upon mileage, probably. And it would be paid out over 10 years, as I understand. These are just kind of concepts at this point. So, we're not real clear on all the aspects of relinquishment, what it would cost. We're not clear on what the current condition of the highway is. And so, the city of Jasper, the county of DuBois, and the city of Honeyberg met with representatives about two or three weeks ago to discuss with a consultant. It's a municipal asset management and planning consultant known as Avenue. They are a division of another larger engineering firm, but I'm sorry, I don't remember who it is.
Yeah, they're...
They're well-known in Indiana.
Yeah, they have about 100 different businesses, offices around Indiana.
With this meeting, with this consultant, was to explore the possibility of retaining their services to investigate the condition of 231 and all aspects of relinquishment, what it would entail, estimated costs in the future, estimated traffic patterns, changes in traffic patterns, safety, all elements in any way associated with responsibilities we would have in assuming control over 231. They would also assist in negotiating with Endot for funds to fund this maintenance and relinquishment obligation. And I think in your board pack or in your materials, there was a proposed agreement with Avenue, or at least a scope of services and their proposed fee for doing that. And that fee was just for the city of Honeyberg. It was a fee not to exceed, I think, $53,000. Now, since our meeting, DuBois County has indicated that they are not interested in participating in the interlocal studying of this. I don't know what that means. I don't, they haven't taken any official action. It could mean that they are not going to accept relinquishment. I don't know. But they have determined that they will not participate in this interlocal. So, if there is going to be an interlocal agreement, it would be between the city of Jasper and the city of Honeyberg to study and share the cost of that study. And also share this consultant for purposes of negotiating a fair compensation for accepting relinquishment of the highway. So, you have a proposed resolution before you that would authorize an interlocal government cooperation agreement between the city of Jasper and the city of Honeyberg to enter into the study of the effects and obligations of relinquishment and to consider the use of Avenue, this municipal consulting firm, for that purpose. This particular resolution, as it's drafted, goes on further to approve that agreement with renew and authorize proceeding with it. We just got a revised agreement today, so you may not want to approve it, but you may want to approve proceeding forward with an interlocal agreement, cooperation agreement, city Jasper.
I understand they're also giving approval of Board of Public Works to negotiate that contract?
Yeah, that would, so essentially, this would authorize, this resolution would authorize the city to enter into the interlocal agreement with the city of Jasper and also authorize the Board of Public Works and Safety to negotiate a comprehensive study with Avenue. You're not approving that agreement tonight. You're just authorizing the negotiations.
Said the cost of it was $50, something thousand?
Fifty-three.
Yeah, now, of course, that's what they're proposing. That's not...
It's on its third, yeah.
On its third page, it says $150,000 to $200,000.
Yeah, I don't know for sure if that's the most, that's the most recent one. That was the one that included DuBois County. And that was going to be for Jasper, DuBois County, and the city of Honeyberg, all three units. So, they have now revised that, and it just went out today, I think. We just got it.
This is the number one.
Yeah, we just got it this morning. I think it went out this afternoon.
That was the entire county.
Okay.
And so, Honeyberg's portion is what's being proposed would be $53,000.
Last line in their proposal here, the anticipated fees based after negotiation where they think there will be for outlined with the lump sum of $53,000 billed monthly on a percent of completion basis. Which I, that is, you know, one thing that confused me and the thing too, that we're paying a lump sum on a monthly basis.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense to me. So, there's obviously a lot of, a lot of things. So, I don't feel comfortable with accepting the amount straight up. We will say that if we accept relinquishment in the future, or the other thing too is we, this will also take into study any economic impacts that could happen to the city of Honeyberg, if we crash data, those type of things, but we'll take it at points. It is a lot of money, but we're talking millions of dollars at stake here, too. We can't just throw an arbitrary number out and go from there. But, you know, it may show in the end that we're so far off with Endot that relinquishment may not be an option in the future. There's everything that needs to be on the table. This isn't moving towards relinquishment, but it has been able to study the feasibility of relinquishment and what that financial impact is to the city of Honeyberg and to the city of Jasper.
Did they say how long this would take?
There is. I think they anticipate by February, they would have deliverables presented to the city, which include, oh, let me see. Includes, it includes up to five meetings in person with a consultant, a summary of key relinquishment findings and key discussion points, an executive summary document outlining the study, the findings, and the recommendation, an appendix document with all study materials, minutes, data analysis, et cetera, and ongoing advice and support. That report would be completed by the end of February, of '26. Let's see, if notices given by the end of September '25.
Clearly, Avenue is not the only company in the state that could do a study like this.
Likely is not, but I don't know of others.
Who initiated it?
The city of Jasper initiated this, and I'm not sure...
Yeah, originally, it was initiated by the county.
Was it?
It's not in there. They called the meeting together. Different firms were discussed, and Avenue was a leader for a lot of reasons. Part of that reason is because most of their employees are from Endot at one time, so they have some there. But also, they're also been involved in relinquishment. And Franklin, around Plainfield area, some other areas around the state, they've done a lot of relinquishment deals with that. One gentleman that heads the company actually was, worked for the city of Franklin, where Franklin contacted Endot and asked for their highway to be relinquished. A lot of communities have done that, said, "We want to take it over. We want to control it. We want to control the speed, the parking, everything along the area." Madison, Indiana, did that a few years ago also, but that was a big part of the revitalization of downtown. Franklin was to slow traffic down and make it... Endot's made things, they just want to get people through town as fast as they can. They don't care about safety, or I shouldn't say that. No, I'm kidding. No, you know, they're focused, they do care about safety. We've had a lot of safety discussions, but their concern is more moving traffic. Our concern is getting traffic to stop here and do business, you know, so...
Well, I'm curious, if the county opts out of the study, and maybe they're going to do a different study, you know, on their own or something, but what power does the county have if we do the study and the county says, "No, we're not interested in a study, and we're not interested in supporting the new highway, and we're frankly not going to take over the highway, the old 231"?
Yeah.
What power do they or we have?
It is a really good question, Jeff, but also realize that they've made no official determination what they're going to do either way.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious about how, not necessarily they, ultimately, it comes back to us.
Yeah.
You know, what are we going to do? And I'm not making a decision either way either. But my curiosity is that what if we said, "Nope, we're not going to, we're not going to take over 231, and so did Jasper, and so does the county"? Would that stop the project? Or would it, or would they say, "Sorry, you guys are getting it whether you want it or not, and now you've just really messed up your negotiation deal. We're not going to really help you much unless you support this". You know, I'm just trying to figure out going forward, what power do we have? If it's going to happen anyway, we need to, we need to know that, and we need to negotiate well, but if...
Yeah, we've... I'm not, I'm not sure, and I'm not even sure that Phil knows everything legally around that, what ramifications are. A lot of things have been said that, you know, they may, it may be forced relinquishment. You know, there's all kinds of stuff been talked about. Obviously, we want any type of negotiations that occurred with the state of Indiana to be open and be fair. I don't know that, I believe personally, just personal belief, but that's why we want to look at other people, that the amount and the conditions of relinquishment do not favor us, and we need to continue looking at other options and some things that are even outside of a cash area, but future assistance with intersection management and other funding outside of the 231 itself. If you look at a lot of the streets, 22nd Street and stuff, where we meet the state, that we've got potholes along those, where those areas meet, you know, that continually get torn up when the snow comes, and there's snow plows hit them and tear them up. So, there's other areas that are impacted besides that surface of 231. We have stoplights, we have guardrails, you know, we have a lot of things.
Yeah, we don't have a stoplight department.
Department and...
Yep.
And those are, I think, significantly more expensive than people realize.
Yeah, they have no clue.
Well, there was an interesting article that was in the paper that Free Press, it's been several months ago now, I believe, maybe even a little further back, that where Jasper's street department, I believe, or maybe that an engineer had done like an internal study to determine things like snow removal and traffic lights and paint on the roads and surface maintenance and, you know, a lot of things. And it was a pretty big number that they did internally.
Yeah, we've done the same thing, so, yeah.
Yeah, so I...
And it's...
Gives us a little bit of an insight.
We all set the same meetings, talk about that, too, you know, and it's a lot of... We mentioned, of course, there's traffic signals. You also have to look at striping at intersections that they do or done so with the machines that we don't have or the ability to do so. Their snow plows have steel, ours are rubber. They're wider, they're able to, you know, they're able to go down the road at a higher speed and push that snow away than what our vehicles are. Ours are made for narrow streets. A lot of times, that's why it takes us, it's more difficult for us to clean a street than it is in the highway just because of the equipment and the chemicals that they use, too, is part of that. You have wider lanes, you know, we've even discussed what happens when somebody hits a guardrail, you know, what about mowing? What about some other things that we have to do? What kind of, we don't have equipment to mow the ditch on the south side.
State's out either, evidently.
They don't, I don't think they do either.
They contract it.
So...
Buy annually.
So, we have a lot of issues there, and how do we handle the start-stop points between county and the city? So, there are a lot of, a lot of things that we have to work out within our local agreement, is kind of the beginning of that. Being able to work together, I feel just by, that probably Avenue is probably the right one. We do have an opportunity. Some of the other things we've got to look at, too, are conditions of the roads, but what's underneath that highway that has to be there? I know that there were $75 million worth of projects noted. You know, my question is if their budget was $150, would they have $150 million worth of projects? What are those projects? What are the ongoing expenses? And, you know, we've even talked about, even from the county side, working on South 231, if you're mowing down through there, we don't, or doing maintenance, we don't have the equipment that stops traffic, that regulates traffic that the state has in that respect, too. You know, the trucks with the large bumpers on the back that you can stop traffic. We don't have any of that. $150 signed to us doesn't mean near as much to the state of Indiana as it does to us. So, we also have speed limit signs and road signs and taking an inventory of those. That'll be something that they've done, but we'll double-check their numbers.
You had mentioned once before, I don't know how long the list is going to be, but there are some advantages to us controlling it. One being, I remember a time several years back, I think you might have been part of that, where we were looking at putting a sidewalk along the west side of 231 between roughly Stein camps up to the grocery store. And there was going to be $40,000, something thousand of engineering fees required by Endot in order to put two blocks of sidewalk there. It blew me away, that it comes down to their requirement, if you're working in there right away, that has to be done before you can pour it a five-foot-wide, two-block-long piece of sidewalk. And so, you had mentioned that there might be a list of things that would be a positive with us taking over the road. But I want to see all that, you know, I want to be able to consider. I know there's things that I'm not considering.
Well, that's part of the study that we come out with those items, too.
Right.
Several areas along that street that we might see quicker and less costly improvements if we had control, but... Close the ditch, close the ditch on South Side Highway.
Yeah.
Maybe on South Side Highway.
The traffic light, forced on the street that gave us all the trouble.
Yeah.
Make a turn lane there.
Yeah.
Turn lane it directly. We have some, a lot of things there. You know, and some of the discussion, and Jeff alluded to it a little bit, that some of these costs are going to be at, what I recall, Davis Bacon type of costs, but we will not, when we do it, we could hopefully do it cheaper, and so if we're getting, you know, just a million dollars for a project, maybe we could do it for $800,000 because we don't have to go through all the hoops that we do with state and federal funds. Realize that this highway, 231, is as much a federal highway as it is a state highway. The state will not maintain two highways, and the federal government will not maintain two. So, what that means, I don't know. Legally, could they force us into relinquishment? Will they just walk away and leave it there? I don't know. I doubt that, I really do, but so...
I would, I would say, though, that they don't, if we don't accept relinquishment, we're not going to be high on their maintenance schedule for improvements to 231, and then our hands are really tied. I mean, if the Midstates Corridor is constructed, the state will not get federal funds for, any federal funds for 231, the old 231.
And it would be pretty rough.
And it'd be up to the state to use its discretion to do whatever maintenance it believes minimum standards of safety require. So, and then our hands are tied because it's, it would still be a state highway, and we wouldn't be able to touch it. So, it warrants studies, so we know what we're getting into if it comes to relinquishment.
Realize that the $75 million includes the $25 million of that going to improvements north of Batesville.
What do you, so, what are your, what's our options tonight? We can table this?
You can, yeah. So, what this resolution proposes is, it sets for the fact that a study is needed because of the potential for this relinquishment. We don't have the facts, we don't know what the effects are, what the costs are going to be. And so, some kind of a comprehensive study in cooperation with Jasper and Honeyberg is necessary. And it authorizes the mayor to enter into this interlocal government cooperative government agreement with the city of Jasper to retain Avenue at some point, based upon negotiated contracts, to do this study cooperatively. We would share information back and forth. Now, and it also authorizes the Board of Public Works and Safety to, or their representatives to actually negotiate a contract with Avenue. Now, the city of Jasper hasn't approved theirs yet. They haven't considered it yet. I'm not saying that you have to entertain it and take action on it tonight. You may want to wait to see what Jasper does.
Yep.
The fact that the county has pulled out of this interlocal cooperative effort is kind of a new development that just sprung on us late last week. And we just got the revised scope of services from the consultant today. So, but, you know, it certainly warrants discussion tonight, so that you're on, you know, you have all the facts that we have.
I do, I personally feel that this study is warranted, but I'm not saying, I'm not sure that this is the right company, or this is the right study, or this is the right agreement. But all we would be doing is authorizing the mayor to, in good faith, go forward and investigate this. Is that what we're agreeing to?
That's correct. Yeah, allowing, you're not allowing us to sign a contract with Avenue at this point, but to negotiate that contract.
I'd like to see what the cost is going to be, if we're going to do any contract signing.
What's that?
I'd like to see what our cost would be.
The proposal is $53,000. Now, that's what they're proposing. That would be the city share.
And that's not...
I don't know what Jasper shares, we haven't seen their performance.
Where would those funds, after spending the whole day on the budget?
Exactly.
Where would those funds come from?
That's one reason we want to bring it up for final adoption of the budget itself, too. So, it would be something that would have to be considered, you know, within the next year's budget. We do have some contract, contracted funds there, but still, it's... Yeah.
All right. So, do you need a motion to table?
You know, if, I would, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept it. If nobody makes the motion, it dies, and we don't need a motion to not accept.
It'd be considered later time, too, if it dies.
If you, if we allow you to do this, will it come back before us? Or will it go to the Board of Public Works, and they will have the final say?
Well, it'll go to the Board of Public Works under contract. However, they don't have authorization to provide the funds.
Right, we got the funds.
So, eventually, it has to come back here. If the funds aren't available, we can't execute, fully execute the contract. So, that's the check and balance system we have here.
We have the checkbook.
If we have this done, will it, I mean, do we even have any negotiating power with Endot to say, "Well, you think that it's going to cost $100 million, and you're giving us $20 million"?
According to Avenue, we do. They will negotiate. They will, and maybe, it won't all be dollars and cents. Maybe it'll be they will, they will turn over equipment, like snow plows.
Length of town?
Maintain stoplights for hundreds of years?
They might. They will maintain, the only, no, the only stoplight they'll maintain is the one at 64, because it's a state highway. It's going to be a state highway. But all the others would be ours.
We could ask for other road funding, too, as a part of it, to do other surface streets that intersect with 231. That's a common thing.
I do think that this is, it sounds like this study is what a lot of people that I have been talking to are asking, the questions they're asking, what is the impact of the road on our businesses? And also, I think just today was another indicator of how much traffic there is on 231. And also, too, just that Stein camps is still going to have delivery trucks. You know, there's going to be, it's going to be, right, all of the semis are still going to be coming through town and going on that road.
No.
And, well, a lot, a lot, but I mean, all the industry that we have here, all of their trucks are going to be here. And so, just that impact of the extra, I don't know, that traffic and what impact that has.
That is, that is part of the study, too, is to look at local businesses, see how... That is, that is part of the study, too, is to look at local businesses, see how impacted the local traffic patterns will be as a result of this. Will they be utilizing sixty-four more? Will they be utilizing Phoenix Drive more? Phoenix Drive is a city street that would probably utilize more as a result of this. Anything coming from north is going to exit the midstates on the north side and come in on Phoenix Drive, if you're going out to the west side. So we've got to look at that impact, too, on other city streets and corridors.
Can we get more information on Avenue, who they are?
Yeah, I can. I, they are a well-established company in Indiana, and I'll give you, they're a subsidiary of a larger group, but, yeah, I can get you that. That was kind of the positive, that because of diversification of their businesses, gave us a little more talent pool of people. We weren't dealing with two or three people, or one may leave, or there may be some turnover impacted. They are. So all, what I'll do is, in the meantime, and prior to the next meeting, we'll give you kind of a history of Avenue. They are themselves a fairly new company, but we have met all the principals of that company, people that will be dealing with this, and president of this area, so there's, we'll get, we'll get you any, we'll get you the information.
I think, just, you know, I want, I want fair information, I want unbiased information. There's a suspicion around the area that, that studies can lean towards whoever's in charge of the study, or studies can lean in the favor of who's funding the studies, or...
That's correct.
So it concerns me a little bit that a lot of their employees are former Endot, if Endot is really behind the project.
They have a couple that are, yeah.
Yeah, so I just...
I, you know, and I, we see that as a positive, frankly. Well, we see it as a positive for a lot of reasons. They understand the negotiation behind it. Hey, you know, we have a lot of local people right now that are former Endot, in fact, that do, we have people working for the county, just being Endot. But now, because of their knowledge, gives us negotiating power, knowing how the inner workings of Endot is, and how to negotiate that. Corey Daley that's on here was, he's from city government originally.
Have they given any references to, like, other projects similar to ours that they've done already?
Yeah, we'll get you all that, that information, and we'll get you all that. And probably the biggest project was the Franklin, Indiana project through town. I've been there, I've visited that, there has been a resurgence in the downtown area. Now, people are driving slower, they've improved the streets, and they've maintained them at our level, so we can, we'll get you that. We'll get you information on projects they've done, a little bit about their background, their parent company, because they are part of the larger conglomerate. But I felt very comfortable in the meetings that they were going to be hard-nosed for our side. And, you know, it's, I won't go into some of those details here, but we felt very, very pleased with what we heard inside the meetings.
Well, I would also think, too, that it's not like their, it doesn't sound like their firm works for Endot in any way. You know, it's not like they're, they're going to lean that way because they're looking for business from Endot in the future. This is what they, they're looking for cities to do things like.
The type of work they do would not, they would probably never be contracted by Endot, frankly, with the type of work that they do. But I'll get you some more information on them.
Can I make a motion that we table it then, like, and do additional information for the next meeting?
You had mentioned earlier that you had requests approving it, and we just don't prove it.
Yeah.
Is there a difference still in the legalities of it? If somebody makes a motion to table it versus if someone makes a motion to...
When you table it, it's a pretty good indication that you're going to consider it again.
Okay.
If you reject it, or you just take, no, if you reject it, then it's, the indication is that you're not, you're not in favor, you don't want to consider it again. If you take no action at all, it's just like tabling it. It can always be put up again.
Thank you very much.
But tabling would give it some, some gravitas, you know, that you, you've looked at it, you've studied it, and you want more consideration, and you want more time.
I think there's a lack of information about who we're dealing with, and this is all new, new to us, and what the, and what the other stakeholders might do in the county and the city.
This is, you know, this is why we pushed it out quickly.
Yeah.
I had, I had no, there was no way I thought you were going to vote on accepting this, all right? But it was better than, the problem is, if we waited and looked at it two weeks and you got it in an email, there wouldn't be these types of discussions.
It's fine.
I like bringing stuff to public meetings like this, having discussions whether you reject it or want to move over, because I think it's good for the public to hear, but I also think that from an open-door policy standpoint, it's great that we can have these discussions on camera.
I don't, I don't think anybody considering this study would, would make it, I don't think it's an indicator whether we are pro midstates corridor or not. I think this, this is just another snippet of information that you need to help make those decisions.
That's absolutely right.
We have to, I mean...
We may not have a choice with...
Yeah, we may not get a choice here.
That's right. We may not have a choice with the midstates corridor. We may not have a choice with relinquishment. So, but we need to know what the effect of relinquishment would be if it comes to pass.
Absolutely agree.
I would agree totally, so.
As a, as a body, as a governmental unit, we're here to protect the interests of the city, the citizens of city of Huntingburg, first and foremost.
Absolutely.
And whatever that is, we need to have the proper information in order to make that decision. That's my feeling, so.
I'd like to see that we're not in a fight by ourselves with the news that we have partners.
Yeah. There's some strength in numbers.
Yes, I agree with that. You know, and, you know, there's a list of assets, I say, that, that are, that the state has generated on culverts and street whiffs and all those things. If our values are drastically different than another community's, it could also complicate any negotiations.
All right.
So that's the other issue.
Yeah, right.
We have to think about.
So did you make that motion?
Yep.
Do we have a second?
What was the motion?
To table?
Table what?
Until, or you just want to say table?
I table it until the next meeting, so that we can gather additional information. Yep.
Okay, so then...
Will that be the next meeting?
September the ninth.
Table two, we get information.
Okay.
I think we need to have that, well, because we need to know by the end of September for the, for the quote to still be good, so.
They're just saying, they're just saying that if they get approval by September thirty, they will have the deliverables by the end of February twenty-sixth, and they push it off a month.
I think we kind of need that. I mean, I think, but, no, you don't...
I think we need to know what it's going to cost us.
For this, for the study?
For the highway, if we, if we take it over, we need to know what it's going to cost.
Right.
I mean, I'm like, Steve, I'm not agreeing to allow bypass or against it. I mean, is this, is this another avenue? We need to know what we're getting, getting ourselves into.
This is more information.
Right.
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
All right, to all those in favor? All right. This has been relinquishment. I guess we've tabled it until at least the next meeting.
If all information is provided, and we'll get as much information between now and then on the company and what we're doing there.
And maybe some funding.
Yeah. How we're going to get it. Fifty-some thousand.
Yeah.
Taking that out of the corporate's budget.
Obviously, there could be some, there are, there are some contract, a little bit of contract money left on this year that could be encumbered, you know, since it is a project that we'd entered to it, the rest could be paid in an next-year budget, or however we want to do it, but...
Yeah, it's going to be over, over two, two calendar years, and we might as well do that.
Yeah. So, thank you for your time, thank you for the conversation, good questions, good responses. Right now, I've got Energy Superintendent John Rudepoor.
Good evening, Council.
Hi, John.
Hi, Senator.
I was probably asked for, there's another three services this month. Yeah, occasion going file, one of them being the Dollar General, near Harlem, so we started a little bit of dirt work here.
What are we going to supply out there?
The overall turnoff at Zord.
Will we be supplying out there?
Gas.
Gas.
Gasoline?
Can't run your electric company?
Not gasoline.
It could.
Well, that's right across from the water tower.
Oh, really?
In front of Larry's house.
Gotcha.
They did some dirt work, so.
I'll be gone.
Good start.
Go ahead.
We got a four-inch high-pressure line right, going right along the road there.
Is that, is, is that in jeopardy? I mean, they're doing a lot of excavating there, cutting down that...
We're right there to the road.
They're way, they're way out.
All right.
In the kind of road right of way, aren't you?
The water department's got a lower order main.
Yeah.
Same area, same area.
Same area.
So you need an approval to go ahead and do that, or what, you ask them?
He's just telling you about it.
Okay.
He does whatever he wants.
He got permission anyway.
It's coming down the line. And one of the crew members was cleaning out a valve on Third and Geiger. Almost a smell of gas, so we investigated it. We thought it was coming from the valve. And as you can see in the picture, what we dug up was a mess.
Yeah.
It was leaking from an old bolt-on flange cap, and that was back in the sixties. So we had to weld line stoppers on all the stuff, put our tapping machine on it, run a bypass. And you can see the finished product when we got done with it, had to do a lot of welding. I think water had an issue with their lines underneath that. I think stormwater had an issue with one of their pipes, it collapsed, so it took a little while to get everything fixed and filled back in, but that is the finished product, which looks a lot better.
Oh, yeah.
It's quite amazing they did that back in the day.
Yeah, the, it's, I don't know, back in the sixties.
Nice job.
It looked like a water, it looked like a water line underneath this, the first picture.
Yeah, water had an issue there, too.
The clamp?
Picture.
I think it was a small leak that kept filling up when we were trying to investigate. Work on our gas line, so they had to come in and replace it with a sleeve.
As a repair clamp?
A repair clamp.
Get the water stopped, so we could work on that gas line before they could repair
their water lines. It's one of the things we dig up, you don't know what you're going to find from years going back.
It's a shame you guys put together such a beautiful piece of artwork and then put dirt back in.
Covered back in.
Yeah.
It looks a lot better. Put a new valve in it. And I U R C come down, did an audit last week with, on the dent program with Kim, Al, and we had a gentleman from I U R C, or U S D I come over, sat down on the audit, everything went real good, no violations, no areas of concern. That's the dent program, which is a lot of bookkeeping, record keeping, we went over that, and found it was in excellent shape, so very proud of that.
Thank you.
Actually, we got an audit tomorrow morning with the same people on our steel mains, so we feel like that's going to go well, too, so. Congratulations to Kim. She works for the gas crews, I'll make sure all the documentation's correct when she puts it on the computer. And then the crews did change out sixty-five old gas meters to the new census meters. We're about eighty-four percent complete on changing meters out in the gas department. I did call Grubner last Wednesday, and was talking to him about their gas meters, but we're getting low on ours, and we have four more books to change out. He said he's got a hundred meters in stock, and he said the next order will be thirty to fifty-two weeks before he gets any more in. So I kind of do some talking, but kind of put a hold on that. It's approved, if I can get them a hundred meters in, that's what I'm asking for, approval, purchase seven hundred meters for forty-four, eight ninety-nine. That'd be the last batch of probably order until spring, and that will hold us, and that should help us finish another book out.
You got money for that?
Yeah, talk to Tom.
Saw that today in the financials.
Yeah, we did have a report on your financials, say what grade.
Like I said, it's going to be the last meters will be ordered until the rest of the year.
Are we still selling the old meters?
Uh, no. We were selling the modules.
Okay.
No, meters, because meters have been changing out, are twenty, point five years old, and they're all mechanical.
Yeah.
You've got parts, moving parts in, so nobody's going to buy them. So we're just scrapping them out for recycle, over to recycle center.
So sixty-five meters one month, is that your record?
No.
Okay.
It's a, it's a good month.
I heard all about it.
Like you're changing out, too, isn't it?
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve John to purchase the hundred new census meters.
I'll say, I'll say the motion.
Forty-four, eight ninety-nine.
We got a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Any questions about the gas? Moving on to the electric. They did replace four poles in St. Henry, there's mold poles, there's some copper lines, so we decided to change them out. Strong new line, we put the A C S R up, about seven hundred and fifty feet, so we upgraded that little section line there. We had an outage, we had a scheduled outage. Then the crews did remove a large tree that was on city property next to the golf course, it was a dead oak tree. The limb started falling out on the road, and I think some of the golfers might have little issues with getting under the tree, and maybe the limb falling out, so they'd become a liability for the city, since it's a dead tree. And you can see from the pictures, it's quite a big tree, but we got it down in one day. So it worked out pretty good. There's another tree on South Cherry Street, we got with the homeowner. It was on their property, but it was a live tree, but it was a big threat to our lines, so we kind of worked with the homeowner. We sent our chitter up there, so we helped with the tree company, so it was another big threat to our lines that was eliminated. So that worked out good. And then we did, we're doing some work behind Stein Camps, on that short stretch of Geiger Street, between Master Brand and Stein Camps. We're kind of rerouting some electric to Stein Camps. There's mold poles there, and we will be changing out Master Brand's pole, we got an outage scheduled with them in October, and that road's going to be rebuilt, I think, sometime this year, yeah? So we have an outage with Stein Camps there for a little bit, tried your generator out, it worked good.
You have to find out what works, well, what we work and what we don't.
Yeah, so that turned out good. And then we, crews changed out two large apartment complexes this month with the new meters, which was a hundred and thirty-five meters, we did in one day. We had three crews out there. We're about forty percent complete on our electric meters. That's going pretty quick. And then we have a quote for our remaining electric meters, that should finish up the purchase of them. We have a quote for a hundred and thirty-three, nine seventy-six, thirty-three cents, I'd like to get approval for.
The quote's on page seven of his report. You can see it there, inventory of those items. Six to nine months, rival time?
Yeah. And that will finish up our buyout of our electric meters.
Make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
We got a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, same son? Motion carries.
I had one thing on electric, I didn't get the report, but a little update on our fifty-five-foot bucket truck. It was ordered two years ago this month, we still can't get an answer on when we're going to get it, so I was hoping to have it by now.
Oh, I remember that. I remember that.
But, uh, August the twenty-three, back when they said with the COVID going on, they couldn't give us an answer on when we were gonna get it. How much it was gonna be, they gave us a rough estimate. All tech, the other company was six years. Terex, who we purchased it from, around two years. So only called them, so now it's the tariffs. They don't know when we're gonna get it because of the tariffs. Those are a lot of the, some of the parts come overseas. But like I said, they can say anything.
They haven't given you a price yet either?
So we don't know what it's gonna cost you either.
They gave us a ballpark price back in two years ago, because it's.
Yeah, they didn't know.
They couldn't give the direct price. Like I said, they gave us ballpark price. So, and both companies were like that.
So I assume when the, when it is built and it's ready to deliver and you do have an exact price, that you can either accept it, pay it, or you can turn it down?
They'll have plenty of buyers out there to buy it.
Sure, yeah.
But, you know, then you're stuck with waiting another two, three years for a truck. They kinda got you.
Yeah.
That's just the way it is.
What do you think the hold is now if we order one today, two years from now again, or you think it's better?
Probably. Two, three years, four, five years.
It's not gonna be cheaper. Yeah.
Nope.
Because I mean, I mean, what's, what's the next truck you need? Do we plan on that now, or you wanna?
Which reason or reason to?
Be another big bucket truck. Kinda like to space them out a little, but.
Yeah.
In fact, fifteen years ago, we had to buy them at the same time. It'd be nice to separate them out a little bit, so. Don't have it all expensing one year.
Right, exactly.
So it won't be long, I'll probably have to get a quote on it, replacing the other big bucket truck.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Not much you can do, just wait.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the electric?
Good job, we had our meter switched out and it was five seconds, seemed like, yeah, it was all prepared to be shut down.
It was quick.
I heard that, that's for a loaf of bread, so.
There you go.
Alright, next up is Water Supply to Jerry, I'll see you go do your report and we wanna.
If we can do John's first, that way.
And break John up and, uh, kinda go through these bids. If we can send him on his way since he's a coroner to, to do Boy Scout.
Yes, brought, uh, John Russell with Commonwealth to speak about our filter rehabilitation of five and seven. Uh, we had our bid opening this morning, as most of you were there for. So, um, I don't wanna misspeak on any of this, this is my first, uh, first one, so I'll hand it over to John and let him kind of explain things and. I'll answer questions as.
Okay.
Better out.
Thank you, Jerry. Um, kinda hot off the press, uh, late this afternoon, we put together the bid tab, uh, this is that legal sized paper, front and back. This is a side by side comparison of the three bids that were received this morning. Uh, three bidders were Kiefer Brothers out of Mount Carmel, Illinois, Graves, uh, construction service out of Switch City, and Thienman out of Westfield, Indiana. As we mentioned this morning, we had, uh, three different numbers we read. First was the base bid, and the base bid includes all the work in the project. Uh, that includes removal of all the contents of the filters, uh, removal of the false floor in that filter. We can look then at the bottom tankage and concrete, has an allowance in there for any concrete repair needed on that. Lines the tanks, both of them, and then it includes, uh, putting back the media, uh, the under drains and then media, and then starting up the filters, disinfecting them and getting them back in service. We had two alternate bids, as we talked about, we call them M A mandatory alternate one and the M A two mandatory alternate two. Mandatory alternate one was the cost difference for a different type of coating on the tanks. The base bid used a polyurea system. This alternate was the difference if we used a hundred percent solid epoxy coating on those two tanks. And then the mandatory alternate two, uh, in the base bid, we wanna reuse, there's two separation media troughs in each filter, we wanna reuse those. Uh, this was an alternate, uh, price if they would, uh, buy new and put new in. Our, our take on it was upfront, we thought there would probably be a slight decrease in cost to use the, for M A one, to use the, uh, hundred percent solid epoxy. And we figured there would be an increase in cost if we wanted to buy new troughs instead of reusing them. We thought that there might be some trade offs, sometimes contractor getting them out of there and keeping them in a good condition to be able to reuse. We thought there might be some adv- advantages for them to kinda tear them out and get them out of there quick, maybe in. Maybe they thought that was a good trade off to buy new, so that's why we did that. As you can see, the base bid here for Kiefer Brothers is pretty significantly lower than the other two, roughly twenty percent lower. We did talk to all three bidders here late this afternoon. Uh, Kiefer did indicate that they bid this aggressively. They looked at it a couple of different times, uh, went to pre-bid meeting, it came back a couple of different times. But they weren't expecting to be quite that much lower than everybody else, so they were taking a look at their bid again. Just see if they didn't miss anything at the time, they indicated that, you know, they're still going through it. So this is what we have, have received. Well, background on Kiefer, I, I don't know if they've worked for the city in, in the past, uh, but they've been in business since, I think, nineteen seventy. They are stationed at Mount Carmel, but they do a lot of work in Indiana. On their bid information that was submitted, uh, some of the recent projects that they've done, they did a ten, almost eleven million dollar, dollar job for Mount Carmel on the wastewater treatment plant, and this is in the past year. Roughly a million dollar, uh, project for water main replacement in city of Sumner. Two point one million for Red Hill State Park. Currently, what's on their books right now, what they're working on, they got, uh, five point nine million dollar wastewater project at Wheatland, putting in a low pressure grinder system. They've done this type of work or this, they're, they're in the water sewer business. So they have plenty of background, uh, and knowledge and know-how on projects like this. Commonwealth has worked with them in the past, I myself, uh, was with another engineer, worked with them on, on projects in the past as well. So they are well qualified to, to do the work. They're not a company that's not accustomed to this, they, this is what they do. But again, I wanted to point out, the bid documents do give them twenty-four hours if there's a mistake in their bid to withdraw that. It was ten o'clock this morning when we opened the bid, so they have until ten o'clock tomorrow morning to do that. Now, like I said, they were, they did indicate that, you know, they went after it aggressively, but they weren't expecting to be twenty percent lower. But right now, uh, I have not received anything from them.
And they only, and they only withdraw their bid, or can they come back, they can't come back with a higher bid?
No.
It's, uh, it's either this price or.
Nope.
We, 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 we didn't get it even close to right, so we're not, we're just gonna pull them.
And, and, uh, this is just a common question for the legalities, but, uh, yeah, they, they can't just willingly pull their bid. They have to show that they have a substantial material mistake in their bid. And then you have the option whether you accept that withdrawal or not. But yeah, they can't come back and say, oh, wait, we, we messed up and we won another sixty thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, then we'll do it, they cannot do that.
Okay.
Or go to the bidding system.
Line item eight is where they were really way down. Is that a labor intensive?
Yeah, I wanted to point out, uh.
Because that's, that's a huge difference.
Yeah, two things, if you look at line item eight and line item ten, both of those together are, were basically putting back the contents of the cells, basically. Line item eight's putting the under drain in, line item ten is putting all the media in, putting the transmitters and level transmitter stuff back in. So overall, if you combine those two numbers, Kiefer Brothers bid, for those two line items, it was roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Graves, roughly four hundred thousand, and Thienman, roughly four hundred and seventy thousand. So between those two line items, that's really the biggest difference in, in the bids there between everybody. Again, Kiefer roughly being a hundred and seventy thousand dollars lower than, than Graves. You know, but, but that, that line item right there, those two line items combines about a hundred and fifty thousand of that right there.
So what's the chances if they do accept the bid, they come back having change orders, need more money?
Um, I, I guess a couple of things I'll say with that, we do have a, an allowance in there for twenty thousand dollars worth of concrete work, because we don't, we can't see the concrete once we get all the contents out there. But there has to be, you know, any contractor, no matter who's doing it, that allowance is twenty thousand. We may have an add or a deduct on that line item, depending upon what we find and what they actually may, may do there. So no matter who that is, that twenty thousand is probably gonna change probably a little bit one way or another, potentially. But if there's a substantial material difference, you know, when they get in there and they, and, and look at this, I, I, I think this is pretty, um. It's pretty well defined what needs to be done, but again, you never know what comes up during, during construction when we find, but it would have to be justified if they come back with any changes in price.
You know, I was looking at the, the alternate one, you know, compared to, to Kiefer versus the other two, like how can you be twenty-four thousand dollars less if they use the epoxy? And anybody else wants seventy-four thousand or a hundred and six, a hundred and sixty-three thousand more?
I'll say that, that was one of the questions we, we asked. We, we did expect there to be a little bit of a decrease in price to use that solid, uh, epoxy. Question was to Graves, you know, what, what's going on there? And his take, he goes, well, you kinda called me, he goes, quite honestly, I didn't get a number back from the applicator for the solids epoxy. He goes, we thought they were gonna be fairly close, but he goes, I, I, I put my number in there without a firm, firm price from somebody, so that's why mine was higher. Talked to Thienman about it, Thienman did get a quote. They, they, they did say, well, the quote we got for the solids epoxy total was a hundred and sixty-three five, so what we put in there was not our difference. That was the total that we put in there. Still, there would have been, even if they would have put the difference in, there would have been a little bit of an error there, but. So I don't know if that answers the question, but we did ask both of them, that, that, or all three of them, what the difference there was.
Because you had originally said the polyurea would be the one that, would be the one that, that moves more, that you would recommend?
Fill in this application, that polyurea, a bit thicker as well, feel it's a really good product for it, you know. And the reason we put that in the base bid, we did, we did think upfront that that epoxy would probably be a little bit less expensive. So we just thought the base bid to have that and, and really do feel that's a good product for the situation.
But the, not the epoxy, but the other one?
Yeah, the base bid, the polyurea.
The epoxy, if you remember that, it's a, it's a very thin coating and it gets hard. Where the.
Yeah.
Polyurea, it's a thicker coating, it's a membrane, stays soft, is pliable. So as the concrete shifts, cracks or anything like that, it's gonna take that a little bit more.
So what's the chances of them then reusing the original troughs? I mean, how old are those troughs?
Those are only, tho- those troughs, because that's the newer cells, they're only about five years old.
So they're probably.
The issue, well, the issue with the troughs is one end is mortared into the filter, the other end is bolted.
Yeah.
So they're gonna have to remove all that concrete around the one end of that trough and then remove those. It's a, it's a precision instrument, if you will, it's very, they're set in there at a certain angle. It's something that's gotta be very precise when it's.
So it's not like a cuttable thing, you can cut it off and then weld it back on later?
They could potentially do that, but probably the most likely situation would be that the, the gullet wall, the short wall in, in both of those filters, that's, that's what it's cast into. Likely they could potentially cut that concrete to get it out of there, clean it back off, put it back in and then grout, re-grout around it.
That would save a lot of money too. Yeah, reason.
That's, we will have, uh, uh, is it Creedah, Tonka, Creedah Water, Tonka Water, they're gonna have a representative there too, that way when they are sitting back in there, they're made sure they are set up the way they should be, they're not twisted or.
And, and that, that's kinda why we took that alternate bid, we kinda thought maybe the contractor may view it that, boy, we're just gonna.
Get a new one in there.
Get this thing out of here, we don't have to be as precise, so to speak, in cutting it out and keeping it in. In good condition, but, uh.
Are we gonna be, like, at a reduced capacity and need to buy more water from Matoka, or what, do you see any operational changes?
Uh, no, our, our filtration plant, we are currently running the, just the six filters versus the eight now. We've been like that since we started to do this investigation on these filter, filter cell issues. As far as that goes, there is line items in here, uh, number two for dust and debris control. Kinda like we did when we did the upgrade on the filter plant, we went from four to eight filters in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one. Uh, they, they will, will hang their curtains to make sure that nothing else is contaminated or, uh, anything like that, so those filters will stay in service. Our, our main goal with this, uh, like John said, they do have till ten A M tomorrow to potentially pull their bid. Have spoke with all of them, the, the one that is lower here, you know, they, they did, uh, they were, after our pre-bid meeting, they did come back out two times to the site. To take extra pictures, to do more measurements, to, I mean, they, they really were aggressive with it. I, uh, that's, knowing that they still have ten A M to come back and, and pull their bid, that's, I would ask that we consider their quote tonight. To move forward with this to keep us on schedule. Our biggest feat is the spring and summer months. Our fall and winter, early spring, um, is our low production time, so that'll give us. Extra leeway to kind of work around that too, if we would have to drop production or anything like that. If something, God forbid, something would become contaminated where we would have to shut down part of the filter plant, we can do that and still keep our capacity to where it needs to be. To not put the city in any jeopardy of more treatment process.
And, and the plant suspects do give the contractors a hundred and fifty days to pull it down. Originally, we had a hundred and twenty days in there. The contractors were a little bit of, a little bit concerned of lead times, getting their materials from the filter manufacturer for the under drain. So in talking with the filter manufacturer and the contractors, we did issue an addendum that did increase that contract time to a hundred and fifty days. The thought there was, uh, we'd still like to, to see ideally, in an ideal world, all that work to be done basically by the end of March or first of April, that, that timeframe before it starts really warming up. But obviously, that kinda, that kinda puts it in an ideal world, you know, they could start maybe sometime around first of October.
My concern is, is if they withdraw their bids, it has to be based on material and substantial mistake. And it can't be just they wanna reconsider one of these numbers here. We're gonna need, we would need evidence that, that they received the wrong number from the supplier or from a subcontractor or something. Not just, not just some subjective decision that, hey, I want out.
That they've, they've, they've been around a long time.
I, I assume so.
I think that's, you know, um, I would assume if, if, if we would get something like that.
It'd be documented.
Yeah.
Well, I think this is great news.
I think it's awesome news.
Way to go, yeah, good job, guys, yeah.
So, so what are you suggesting we do with the alternate two, leave it in there or just decide later?
I, I really, really feel like, obviously, um, that, that's a significant increase in cost and, uh, it was called out base bid, they need to take their precautions to get the existing ones out of there. If, I, I guess worst case scenario, if something happens during construction that's not their fault, the board, we just cannot reuse these, that could be considered. But we, we really feel like right now, uh, we wanna stick with that base bid and not consider that alternate. It, it is a lot more, you know, obviously, that's a lot of dollars saved if they reuse it.
So what, how does that work though? I mean, we have it in there just if that's a worst case scenario, but it is the understanding that they're gonna do everything in their power to reuse it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Commonwealth will be their favorite day while they're working on it? To watch it, overwatch and see it?
We do have in our contract for a project rep to be there, it's an hourly basis, we do have a set fee, uh, estimated for that. I don't wanna say that somebody's gonna be there eight hours a day every day, because I don't know the contractor's work schedule.
Okay.
But while they're there and doing substantial work, there would be somebody there.
Because it'd be nice to have a witness to say if they destroyed it or, you know, whatever, you know.
We do, yeah, with, with water, with every project we've done, with the water main project, uh, with the local contractor in twenty nineteen, the filter plant upgrade. John was involved in that as well, there in twenty nineteen, they did have an inspector there, but we find it in our best interest to keep an employee with them at all times too.
Okay.
So we, if, if they're there, somebody from the water treatment plant, whether it be myself or another employee, will be there watching over the shoulder.
Because I know.
With our best of interests, yeah. Also with that, uh, Tonka Water, we'll have a rep there on three separate occasions.
Yeah, you'll notice we have a couple of line items in here for, for testing as well, so specifications and plans do call out for testing at various, various, uh, intervals on the project. Obviously, we wanna make sure these tanks are waterized and it's all said and done, so testing, once we get, uh, uh, once we get the, the, uh, contents out of there and, and look at the concrete. Before we do the lining, so there will be hydrostatic testing then, after lining's done, there'll be another hydrostatic test, and after we put the under drain system in, we're gonna do a third. So there are multiple times and events, uh, where we'll do that testing.
What's the warranty on something like this?
The standard was one year.
One year. One year.
That's what the contract does call out, is it one year?
That's on you, Jerry.
That's all we get on everything.
I mean, that's on you to really test it out, see what it's got.
That's right.
It is unfortunate, you know, this, this, this situation arose about two years after our filters were put in service.
So we only got two years of service on the-
With that being said, that original construction was built in 2003.
Right.
That we put in service in 2019. You know, multiple things happened with concrete. You know, it's unfortunate that this has happened.
The, the filters, the, the bottom slab, the underdrain, or the effluent pipe that's under all that, that was put in back in 2002. And actually, most of the walls, the exterior walls of those filters were put in in 2003.
Understand.
So you need a motion, please, with Keith's brothers in construction?
Yes, sir.
Make that motion.
They're, they're recommending that we take the lowest responsive base, base bid in an amount of 752, 578, 72. See it at the bottom of the front page here.
I'll second the motion.
We have first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Guess what we see?
Great work. Thank you. Well, start out with our distribution. We did install eight new services this month at the Seventh Street duplexes. They're at the intersection of Seventh and Van Buren. We did also, we've got a, a lot of new guys in the water department over the past seven, eight years. And we did something that we haven't seen a lot of is confined space training. We do have confined space areas, whether it be in the water filtration plant itself or large, large vaults, meter vaults, anything like that that we do do. AWWA did have a confined space training in Paoli. So we did send the guys up there for that, to, to keep them up to date on safety regulations. Then we had a valve box at First and Van Buren that was damaged during some pavement repair. We did, unfortunately, we weren't able to repair that one without removing the whole valve box. With that, though, we were able to use our hydro excavator and minimize the, the damage to the roadbed. And then-
Wait, I have a question, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Whenever you said you did the, the AWWA confined space training, what was that? Was that like trench box type training?
So notice, so it's training for any confined space, any small area that could potentially have any hazards as follows, as, as far as falling hazards. You know, they teach you how to use a tripod, a body harness to be able to go down into confined space area. They'll teach you as far as using a gas meter. Anytime you go into a confined space like that, you need to have a gas meter with you that's monitoring constantly. They really, you know, it's, anytime you're doing that as well, you need a man up top to help monitor that. We use fans in order to pull air out, plus also push fresh air in. So it just kind of, kind of goes over all the regulations that OSHA has for that and the guidelines.
And only the new people win, or everybody?
No, everybody, we sent the whole department. We did, any, anytime we have anything like that, we can send to them. I guess I should redact that, not the whole department. Our plant operator did say it's a water filtration plant to run the filthy plant, as needed.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, yeah, no. So, but the, the, the majority of the employees do come in contact with this. They, they did, they did take that training. Something that we do, the, the city kind of shares that, not, we, you know, we, we share gas meters between departments, fall protection, things like that. So it's, any, anytime we do that, we do have all the equipment to do it. We utilize it, it's just nice to, for, for the, the ones that have taken the course before, it's a good refresher course.
How often do you do those kind of trainings, like every quarter?
We try to incorporate different trainings. We, you know, there's confined space, there's trenching and shoring. We just did a chainsaw safety class with the street department. Then we, we also do traffic safety. So we try to implement something like that, yes, quarterly, as far as the water department goes. And then there's always the extra that we, we do as, as it arises. Jason, like I said, Jason Stom, dealt with LTAP with the, the chainsaw training. It's something that a lot of the departments, I think every one of the departments here use chainsaws. And, and more than anything, it's-
Just about everybody attended that.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, it's a great thing, not only for the, the new employees, it's never been anything like that, but for the, the ones that's attended it five, 10, 15 times. Always to keep you mindful.
Sure.
You know, we're all, we're all 10-foot tall, bulletproof until it happens.
So you cut your leg off.
Yep, that's right.
Do they give you documentation on the thing that you're employed? Do they give a certificate of completion or?
Yeah.
Is that recorded some way in their personnel files?
We keep it, I, I keep, so we ourselves have files for each employee. We keep all of the documentation for water licenses, their CEUs that they obtained for those, any, like their CDL paperwork, whenever they pass their CDLs, things like that. We keep that with their, their city file.
Okay.
So we can refer to it later, you know, some-
Definitely.
We'd have something to say, hey, this guy was trained, you know, in 2025 in, you know, July.
Not only-
This is when he took the training.
Not only is it keeping the employees safe, but it's keeping the city safe as well.
Thank you.
Good.
So, back to my list here.
Sorry.
Most of, most of you have probably been past the water treatment plant. We, we have been working on our north entrance there. We did find the concrete had cracked, not in a, a joint, and dropped roughly one and a half to two feet. We did remove that concrete, it was 10 inches thick. And the, the only metal that was in it was at the very bottom of it, what was left and not rotted away. So they, we also dug roughly three foot of subsoil out of there. All that was filler. They, whenever, all that was built years and years ago, that was a very dramatic hill. So we did, we did drop our grade down to three feet. We are gonna get started on that this week. You'll, you guys will start to see that come back together. We will use geo matting and then bring our rock up in lifts to ensure that that will not happen again, as well as rebar installed in that driveway entrance. Other than that, we investigated a water, a small diameter water main on Elm Street. It's something that was put in, it is plastic when it was installed many years ago. They did not install it with tracer wire. It's always been very hard to locate. The, in the past, it's, we've located services out and we went up there this year, hydro excavated in multiple spots to actually find that water main and exactly where it lays and where it ends, and installed water markers with that. So the employees of the future will know where that lays. Our paper maps of five feet off of a corner of a house and six feet off the roadway is really changed over the years, with the houses changing and the roadways growing. So, other than that, we, we did assist the street department with the hydro excavator and pot holding utilities on Savannah Drive for some work that they were doing. We also replaced two sample stations, one at our FedEx location and one on Chestnut Street that's located at the Hengberg Church of Christ. Those sample stations that we replaced are cast metal that is epoxy coated. Over the years, that epoxy coating has come off. And with that, the cast is starting to rust. We take our routine back tea samples out of those monthly, as well as our TTHMs and our HA5s that we send off to labs and are reported to IDIM as part of our quality of drinking water. So we did, we did replace those with new stainless steel sample stations that we will not have that problem with in the future. We, we also, we had a, had a little fun this past month. We did help the Hengberg Police Department and the Fire Department in building a slip and slide for their badge and blaze camp. So that was kind of a nice change in pace to, to get to help them build that with some straw bales and plastic there and see the, the youth get to enjoy that.
Did you have to test it first?
We did not. We did not, we should have.
Yeah, just to make sure, you know?
Definitely. We do, we do enjoy the water and the kids. We are looking forward to the Herbst Fest this year. We, from there, we did have two water main breaks. Unfortunately, on a section of Van Buren Street between Seventh and Eighth Street, we have a 10-inch water main. It's a distribution main that runs from our east water tower there. We've had a little trouble with it in the past, but here lately, it's become kind of a problem for us. The first leak that we had, we got called in about 11 o'clock in the evening, and the guys worked through the remainder of the day until 3:30 the following day. Unfortunately, the, the following day from that, we had water coming out of the road again, roughly 60 feet away. The, the first day, they sleeved in about six foot of new pipe. The second repair was able to be done live with a repair clamp. I am seeking quotes on that to look at repairing that block of water main. I know there's some future paving there down Seventh Street that's gonna come out in that intersection of Seventh and Van Buren. Our water main does lie underneath the curving and sidewalk down Van Buren. So we're hopeful to not have to get out into the road any more than in the, in the intersection that will potentially be repaved at that project, so.
I think it's been, that's blowed out several times over the years.
It's, I've, I've been here going on eight, it's, we've seen it four times. I'm sure it's happened in the past.
I've seen it, I've seen it a lot.
Yeah.
I think I've probably helped put that sidewalk back a couple times.
Yeah, all right. So it's definitely warranted to be replaced. So I'll be, I'll be bringing forward bids for that, as well as that main does lay beneath the sidewalk and some of the curving. So I'll have, I'll make sure I have quotes for sidewalk and curving replacement when I bring that quote back.
Sleeving's not an option?
I do not like to sleeve pipe. There is no repair for that sleeve when that pipe deteriorates from that sleeve. But we've, the, the city sleeved Fourth Street in the past, and we've had three leaks up there since. Luckily, they were service lines that had blew out of the main, and we were able to put those back together. But sleeving usually is-
Can you put that?
More expensive. You still have to excavate two pits. We can do it cheaper installing pipe ourselves.
Can you put it on the sidewalk?
Well, that's, it's, it's been talked about, there's some utility poles there in the, in the vicinity, as well as the, the new loading and unloading station for the rail, the railroad cars whenever the Spirit of Jasper comes through, so. It's not a, you know, a great thing, but hindsight, half the sidewalk's already gone from the last water main break.
Probably. I didn't see it.
We're, we're replacing that and curving anyways, so. But I will be coming our next, next council meeting with quotes to, to look at getting that approved, to get that replaced before that paving works done there. From there, we, we have been working with the Parks Department. They had a backflow that failed at Marcus Street Park, so we went in, reinstalled the new backflow, tested it. And then they also had a backflow device that their Little League field, that had failed. They, they had time to replace it, so they replaced it. And then we went down there and tested it for them so they could put it in service. Other than that, filter plant is running as should. We, we have had a lot of issues with our, our lake due to the water temperature here lately. Anytime it gets hot like it has, it, it causes our solubles to rise, which entails we, we can't treat that water. At that point, it is too dirty to treat. So we have to have that water settle out in order to pull it through the water treatment plant process to treat that water. So we have worked a lot of, a lot of extra shifts on the days that we can treat water. Weekends, we've been running shifts in order to keep our usage from Patoka down. We do have the redundancy to buy water from Patoka, which is great for the community. We are set up on a allotted amount of water that we can, that we, we're set up on a rate ladder. After a certain allotted amount of water a month, the price increases drastically. It is cheaper for us to pay overtime than it is to purchase water from Patoka. We're lucky that we have the crew that's more than willing to come in on third shift and on weekends to work and help treat water to keep caught up so we don't have to pay less higher costs of Patoka, Patoka water.
Awesome. Great.
Other than that, our, our metering system, we, we're getting out there and getting those meters installed. Just today, I was talking to Blake Lindar, our meter tech. He got four of our large diameter meters replaced today. That's, that's good for our large diameter meters, just due to the fact of scheduling with businesses and, and just the sheer fact of installing those meters. Monday, they installed a meter, went in thinking it was gonna be a straightforward meter install, and they ended up replacing about three foot of pipe along with the meters. So it's, you never know what you're getting into with these large diameter meters. They're put in with zinc bolts that deteriorate, that are under the ground with moisture. A lot of, a lot of ductile iron that was never coated or painted, that deteriorates, that we cannot put anything on. So we're, we're gonna continue to work through that over the next couple of months. We are hopeful that we will have all these replaced, though, by the end of this year. I'm hoping to beat John. We, we did get about a five-year head start on that. So-
But I told you, it's your lucky day split, I mean-
That's right.
So with Maple Street Waterline.
Maple Street Waterline, it is one that is on our, on our list. It, it is an old water main. Part of, part of Maple Street is transite, that we will look at getting out of the, the ground there, too, from Main Street up to-
Top of the hill.
Is it Oak Street, Oak Street curves around there?
Capitol Hill.
Oak Street is in the middle.
Okay, so Oak Street, so it is transited to that point and then does transfer to cast iron. We have had some issues up there from Oak Street to Hickory with that cast iron water main. Unfortunately, you know, we've-
You think it heals moving or just?
No, I truly believe it's just bad pipe. We did, that roughly four years ago, whenever I stepped in this position, we replaced Hickory Drive right away.
Yeah.
Down the Dead End Road due to the same issue. We, we have had some issues on that hill. I know you were at the water main break, this last one we had, Neil, you're right there, too. We, it is on our scope, definitely on our, our plan. Unfortunately, there's some other roads that have take precedent over that one, just due to being in worse shape. Something that hasn't been done in the past, whether it due to other projects or just as money allows, water's not a very lucrative business. We don't, people might think it, but we don't make as near as much as what people think we do off the utilities just due to the chemical costs and the process of the utilities of treating the water. But we have, in the last four years that I've jumped into this, we have tried to replace four to five city blocks of water main a year. Previous to that, we, we were at a maintaining standpoint. So we're trying to get our infrastructure where it needs to be as quickly as possible as our financials, financial state allows.
Sure, sure.
Great job. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
A person asked me, I don't know if I'm asking the right person, of it's you or the park, if you go out on the city lake, if you go out and you want to put a boat in, or you want to go out and fish or whatever, where are you supposed to go to the bathroom? Used to have a forty party out there, it's gone, I don't know, you don't have anything anywhere, do we?
No, no, there's nothing out there. Something that we don't hear much about until about every four years. And usually, I get this question from a council member. I do know-
I'm not up for elections, so.
Right, yeah, there you go, there you go.
I'm not.
No, all jokes aside, I do know that in the past, they did look into it. It was something that was looked into when Gary Meyerholz was the superintendent. That is downhill from the sewer that is there. So the, the cost of, one, the facilities to put in with the E1 pump to be able to pump it up to the sewer main. Then, then on top of that, of course, the, the question of who is maintaining this bathroom. You know, we've, as, as we've seen, we've had a boat dock over there for two years. And we've had lights come up missing off the boat dock, we've had rails being broken on the boat dock. It's kind of hard to put faith in the community that they're gonna take care of what we have.
Outdoor outhouse.
Yeah, it's, I would be more than happy to- Yeah, it's, I would be more than happy to put an outhouse out there and put your phone number on it.
Yeah, because you're probably on it already.
Because you've planted more trees.
Like I said, it has been a topic of discussion. With that being said, you know, that would come out of the water department's budget, and I'm, I'll be completely honest with you, I am more focused on infrastructure. The boat dock that was put in out there was paid for out of the mayor's edit funds when Steve Swinghammer was the mayor. That was brought to the city numerous times, wanting a boat dock out there. There was a couple articles wrote on it, wanting a boat dock out there, and I told all the, everybody that came to me and asked questions, whether it be the community or council, the mayor at that point, I have no desire to spend money on things like that whenever we have infrastructure that's failing in the community. My main concern is getting every resident in this town clean water to their house.
Yeah, but I mean, if we're going to enjoy the lake as a, you know, at some point, you know, I wonder, what's the cost of a porta potty?
It's maybe, whatever, we have to go dump it.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
I mean, you contract somebody and they come do it.
It's a conversation we can have.
Bring the cost to the next meeting.
Yeah.
So maybe, one of these guys can discuss, you know, you, Brad, or whoever, I don't know whose property it is, it's the water department's property.
That's the water department's, there's a little small park out there that, I'm not 100% honest.
That's why I'm asking, who's supposed to be taking?
Truly not, truly not sure who regulates the park. I know there was one point that the park was looking at taking that over to be able to use some grants with it. I don't know if that ever happened, that was whenever Rachel Steckler was here, we had spoken about that. I'm honestly not sure who that's tied to, to be honest. We do maintain that area. We did a couple years back, put filled tile in that park area to get the water away from it, there was an issue there. It's, the porta potty, it's, sounds like a great idea until it's turned over on its side and it becomes an issue.
And you're...
But we can, if it's something...
So what is, is it currently just a shelter house there? There's a couple places.
Shelter house, there's a small playground.
Yeah.
And then the boat ramp.
And that's where the porta potty would be, I think?
I honestly, you know, I've lived in this community my whole life, and I can't tell you that I've ever known of any bathroom being there, honestly. There's never been a facility there.
Not in my lifetime, yours?
And the only time I've ever heard anybody ask about it is usually one council in every four years.
It's not me, Jeff was the last one.
Jeff was the last one, yes.
I remember that.
Yep. But that's...
It's because of all peeing in the lake and your tree.
Topic first, yes. Hey, the fish being there, too.
Bring your own butt.
Yeah, no, if that's something you want, we can, we can look into that, maybe a couple options as far as...
I'm sort of looking at the backstory, because I don't know if there is any story here.
Right, yeah, it's...
I mean, if you're telling me it's uphill to the sewer pipe, that's, that's problem one.
Right.
You know? That's the biggest issue. Just charge that to Brad.
Hey, I'm all about it. You give me the word.
But he has to pay the sewer bills.
That's right, yeah. Yep, that's for sure.
That's all I had, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, guys.
City Attorney Phil Schneider.
Nothing.
Court Treasurer Tom Ditter.
I have nothing.
Any council items? Any citizen items? We haven't a here today.
He's not here tonight.
I think we're all citizens now.
We have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Settle.
Kirk out.